Good afternoon. Pleasure to welcome everyone to the March 28, 2024 briefing. And we're actually, this briefing is for the meeting next week on April the 4th, 24. We're briefing today. And we actually have no discussion items. That's the good news. And then we'll turn, I'll turn the meeting over to our county manager to walk us through the agenda for next week.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We have a fairly straightforward agenda. It's been a hectic month, and so I get a little bit of a, a little bit of a breather with today, but we do have some important items for consideration for the April 4th formal meeting. And so I'll just dive right into it. We had three public hearings. The first one is a public hearing to consider the expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project and authorizing agreement with a company that will be formally named, who am I going to look to here? There you go, Hasani, come on up. Yeah, he'll, he'll talk a little bit about how that name's going to get released and, and so on and so forth, so.
County manager, since he's on the way up, I'd like to point out that 84 years ago today, my wife was born.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Mr.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Pleasure to be before you all again. We briefed this item last Thursday, and we are prepared to do a full presentation next Thursday, where we will reveal the company name and full company details. But this is an economic development incentive package for a company looking to locate here in Forsyth County, specifically here in Winston-Salem. This company is looking to invest $5,090,000 in capital, and that is comprised of real property as well as machinery and equipment. This investment would create 50 full-time jobs with an average salary of $65,294 per year. This incentive is a five-year incentive, and the county's incentive would be $69,746, and that comprises 50% of the new taxes. And as I stated, it is in the city of Winston-Salem, so the city of Winston-Salem also is proposing local incentives as well as the state of North Carolina. But as I stated, we are prepared to do a full detailed presentation next Thursday at the public hearing, where we will also detail the company's name as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for Hasani. We look forward to next week.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Hasani. Our agenda, item two, you also heard from the attorney last week, but it's a public hearing regarding tax-exempt bonds for healthcare facilities to be issued by the National Finance Authority for the benefit of Novant Health Incorporated. We've got an associated resolution approving, in principle, the issuance of not exceeding $785 million of healthcare facility revenue and refunding bonds. Our attorney, Gordon Watkins, can provide a little bit of background information, and I think Mr. Boyer may be on the line, but Gordon, anything you want to add?
No, again, this is, these bonds do not involve any potential liability for Forsyth County, but it is required pursuant to federal law that the county where the projects are located approve them, as Mr. Boyer indicated. Some of the projects are in Mecklenburg County, and those will be approved by Mecklenburg, so we don't have to worry about those. But he, he will have a presentation next week at the formal meeting, and that will show a few pictures of some of the construction work that's been going on in Kernersville and at the Forsyth Memorial Hospital.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Gordon. And then the final public hearing that was carried over from the last meeting, it is a zoning petition of Jerry Stoltz and Patty Stoltz from AG to General Business L. Got a list of uses there. It was zoning docket F-1637, and I think you've seen the, seen it twice, but I'll turn it over to Chris, yeah?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not going to run through the PowerPoint. I believe we've probably seen it enough. I am available to answer any questions. I have, I have not myself had any conversations with anyone since that meeting for either the petitioners or for the opposition. But again, I am glad to answer any questions if anyone has any, if I can answer them.
I might ask one, because I understand there was a meet, a public meeting in the back of the hill this past week, I guess this week, this week, like two days ago. And, and I think there have been some adjustments and the developer willing to, and the owner willing to change again, reduce the sort of what the things, to become more specific, maybe is a better way to say it. And, and I think one of the issues is probably, it's in this long list here on our thing, is that the category that has like drive-through service on it, does that include, that includes, that same category includes, well, let's see, a restaurant with drive, without drive-through service must be in one category. Is it a different zoning number if it's a drive-through, I mean, a restaurant with drive-through service?
It would be a different use. It wouldn't be a different zoning category, but they, at this point, they have requested both. They, a restaurant with and restaurant without.
Okay, I got it. I was getting through the narrative, okay. All right, anyway, I think we are going to have some more reductions in our specificity, narrowing the number of possibilities for development.
And the one thing that is an important, is important, and I mean, I know a lot of times that folks that have items on here are, you know, a lot of times do watch these briefings. If there have been additional changes, we will need that information conveyed to us, and we will need to have revised written consent and conditions, and we will need to revise the special use permit. So if there are changes being contemplated, hopefully they'll reach out to us before next Thursday, and we can have those, if not included in your packet, at least at your spot, so.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So we have four items that are special resolutions. The first three, four, five, and six really recognize April as, as certain months, and so next Thursday we'll have the folks from those different departments come talk to us and basically talk about, you know, you've got Public Health Month, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and National County Government Month. So we'll have, have kind of formal presentation of those resolutions at that time. Item seven does come to us from the Historic Resource Commission. It is a resolution authorizing the Historic Resources Commission, on behalf of Forsyth County, to form the Forsyth County America 250 NC Committee, and Heather Bratland is going to talk about what that's all about.
All right. Hang on one second. Okay, can y'all see that? I think I did it properly. I'm Heather Bratland, one of your two Historic Resources officers, and I'm here with Mike Wakeford, who's the executive director of Muse Winston-Salem, and we're here to talk to you about the America 250 Committee for Forsyth County. We're asking you to adopt a resolution officially establishing the committee as the county committee for America 250. Historic Resources staff will be, is planning to be the committee secretary to ensure that all open meetings laws and so on are followed, and then Mike Wakeford, again, who's a professor of history at the School of the Arts and the executive director of Muse, has agreed to be the committee chair. This would be a diverse committee of voting stakeholders from the cultural heritage community in Forsyth County, and then there will be open membership to interested organizations and people. So why are we asking you to do this? America 250 was established in 2016 by Congress with nonpartisan membership, including senators and representatives from both sides of the aisles, private citizens, and representatives from all three of the federal branches of government. And then Governor Cooper, in turn, asked the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources within the state government to lead the statewide commemoration. Historic Resources Historic Preservation are also staffed within the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, so the Historic Resources team is kind of a natural fit for overseeing or helping manage that commemoration within each county. And the state has asked each county to form an official county committee, who will be the liaison between the county and the state to help spread the word about planning efforts, share information about what's going on, help communicate information about the themes, grants, things like that that are available. So that's what we're trying to do today, or will be trying to do next week. This is a map of 100 counties across Forsyth County, or across North Carolina. You can see that we're highlighted green, which means we're in progress. A group of local stakeholders have met with the team at America 250 NC about forming the committee, but obviously that hasn't been done yet. Charlotte is the only major metro in North Carolina that actually has already established their America 250 committee. So the committees will be dedicated to some planning and organizing of events, serving, again, as I said, as the local conduit between the state and our local organizations, and then encouraging participation in America 250 from a wide variety of local organizations. So why should we do this? Because the county, or the state, excuse me, has set aside $10,000 in grant funds for each official county committee to kick off our planning. Those can be used for a variety of different activities, including strategic planning, markers, exhibits, educational outreach, research, and so on. Applications for those grants are due May 3rd. We got very little warning about this coming out, so we're kind of a little behind the eight ball, and we actually will be bringing a resolution to you, I believe, on April 18th for allowing us to apply for the grant money. Organizations within the community, including municipalities and nonprofit organizations, will also be eligible to apply for specific program grants that range from $2,500 to $30,000, with only a 15% match required. And many of the activities that can be funded with those grants are similar. There will be two rounds. Again, the first round of applications for this is due May 3rd of 2024, and then there will be another round opened up in May of next year. We have already shared this information as widely as possible with people we think would be interested stakeholders, cultural heritage organizations, and so on. So this is a list, and red on the left is the list of this, a small list of groups that we've invited for sort of an initial meeting. So you'll see the Historic Resources Commission and Muse are involved, the African-American Heritage Initiative, Hispanic League, Historic Befabra, Louisville as a very active local historical society that's representative of our rural community, Old Salem, Out at the Movies, Triad Cultural Arts, the Winston-Salem African-American Archive, and then the school system. But once that initial steering committee meets, we are going to send a letter of invitation to participate to all of the invited stakeholders that are on this group. We are hoping to also add the Winston-Salem Foundation to, representative from the foundation to the steering committee, and we're open to adding other stakeholders. This group is intended to be inclusive and diverse and representative of all of our community, not just some, you know, organizations that were here or had people that were here 250 years ago. So in 2024, we're going to convene our steering committee, apply for the county committee grant, develop a website and logo, and then invite stakeholders. In 2025, we'll continue developing those relationships, work with stakeholders, planning and budgeting events, and publicize the coming semi-quintcentennial. And then in 2026, there will obviously be a whole year's worth of events throughout the year, and we'll be working to publicize those and get people to participate. So in sum, we're asking you all next week to adopt the resolution establishing the committee. Again, Mike Wakeford will be the committee chair, staff to the Historic Resources Commission will work as secretary. We really are striving to have a diverse group of members on that committee. And one thing I did not include in the presentation, but I do want to make clear, I keep saying, this is not your father's bicentennial. I'm a bicentennial baby, and this is really intended to be something different. The state has developed two themes. One is revolutionary North Carolina, what you would expect, but the other is when are we us? And that is a celebration of sort of the perfecting of the union that continues to go on today, the struggle for civil liberties and rights, you know, among women, different races, genders, gender orientation, those kinds of things. So there are plenty of stories from Forsyth County that will fit into that theme and will allow us to engage stakeholders across the community. I'm happy to answer questions for you, if you have any.
Maybe one to start, and that is, what are, since the grants do in May.
Yes.
You're not going to have, I don't know if the steering committee has convened yet and met, but have they?
We have not convened yet. We're planning to meet April 11.
So what are you sort of thinking, kind of, how complicated is the grant application?
The grant application is not complicated. The state actually intentionally, because they work on a lot of federal grants, they intentionally made it a much simpler process. Having just worked on a federal grant myself, I can say it looks to be much easier. So the county committee will be, I think, applying for the grant to do some strategic planning, to develop a website, to get a logo together, and then one of the things you can apply for is an online exhibit, so for developing a website and a logo and so on, and then we can put some kind of basic information about the history of Forsyth County and some events and places, people that fit into those themes on that website.
That's good. That's great. And Mike, thank you for your willingness to serve as chair. Certainly appreciate your leadership, and Heather, it's part of your job, I know, I mean, but let's thank you. So it's good. Anyway, any other questions for him? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We have five budget or finance items. Item nine is a resolution approving a revision to the fiscal year 2024 Home Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan for Older Adults and submitting the revised plan for state approval. Kyle Wolf.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a, this item is necessary to approve a revision to the FY24 Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan. The revision is shifting $69,914 of congregate nutrition funds to adult daycare. It's really just basically reallocating some funds, I believe, for senior services, yep, senior services requested to use the funds in a different way, and so we need your approval to submit this back to the state.
Questions for Kyle.
All right, thank you, Kyle. The item 10 is also an amendment to fiscal year 24 budget ordinance appropriates $94,900 of surplus proceeds to the Motor Vehicles and Mobile Equipment Replacement Subfund, and Kimberly Bussey with Budget Management will review.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This item appropriates $94,900 to the Motor Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Subfund. On October 19th of 2023, a general services presented this board with an auction report detailing the sale of motor vehicles and equipment property through Rogers Auction, Realty and Auction Company. Proceeds in the amount of $94,900 have now been paid to Forsyth County, and these funds need to be allocated back to the Motor Vehicles and Replacement Subfund for future purchase, vehicle purchases by the Sheriff's Office Emergency Services and by the county fleet. A breakdown of those funds to go back to these different departments are $68,150 to the, or for the Sheriff's Office vehicles, $8,650 for emergency services vehicles, and $18,100 for the county non-fleet vehicles, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Kimberly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Agenda item 11 is an amendment to the fiscal year 24 budget. It appropriates $50,000 from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for Agreement Addenda 121. Adam Pendleberry with Public Health will review.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This budget ordinance amendment appropriates $50,000 from NCDHS under Agreement Addenda 121, our temporary savings fund. These funds can be used to support any core function at public health. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
What are you thinking about using the $50,000 for?
We're still planning on what to use this for, but I can tell you at the very least, these can be applied to draw down salaries if we haven't done that yet, so that'll always be the backup plan.
Got it. Any questions for Adam?
Thank you. All of these are going to be public health because they are ADA, but item 12 is an amendment to the budget to appropriate $12,108 for Agreement Addenda 116, and Sharita Sutton's going to review this.
Good afternoon. We are requesting the board's approval to appropriate an additional $12,108 from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for AA116, which supports our Healthy Beginnings program. The funds will be used to support the Healthy Beginnings and Infant Mortality Reduction Program. Any questions?
Any questions for Sharita?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sharita. Item 13, Camilla Pleasance will review. It's a budget amendment for $16,250 for Agreement Addenda 452.
Good afternoon. Approval of this amendment will allow us to appropriate additional $16,250 from state funds for the Agreement Addenda 452, which is our Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program, and these funds will allow us to see additional patients for screening. Any questions?
Questions for Camilla?
Thank you.
I have a curi, I have a curiosity question for you. The curiosity question is on, are these redistributed, where, these redistributed funds from FY24 that DHHS finds not spent, reallocates? I'm just kind of curious, because both of these two look like some pro-rata distribution of leftover funds that are coming, I wouldn't think it's new funds that are creating these.
That I'm not sure of. I'm not sure where they, they give the additional ones, the funds from, but they do let us know that they have some funds remaining if we needed to see additional patients to just make the request.
I can confirm that, Commissioner Martin, these are reallocated funds, so if there are counties that haven't spent theirs throughout the year, DHHS checks on that and real allocates those.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Camilla and Adam.
Yeah, and I'll add my thanks. Public health is aggressive about when they see those opportunities, bringing them to you, and so the fact that you're seeing them means that they, they understand that we can use those here in this community, and we'll go through the steps necessary to get them into the system, so.
So you have to request them, they're not just distributed.
And you have to approve them, so.
I got it. Great, thank you.
We have a number of grant items. Constantine, Constantine Stomati with Parks and Recreation will come up and review items 14 and 15. And I'll just introduce them, and you can go into detail, Constantine, but item 14's a resolution for an application with Duke Energy Foundation at Blues Lake, and then the other one is a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant, so, Constantine.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So the first resolution authorizes us to apply for a $20,000 grant from Duke Energy Foundation. If you, if we are successful, the funds will be allocated to install interpretative signs throughout soon-to-be-open Blues Lake Park. These informational displays, I like to call them, aim to provide park visitors with the opportunity to learn more about the fauna and flora of the area, as well as the importance of preserving green spaces. In addition, the county will contribute $10,000 to this initiative, bringing the, the project budget to $30,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this one. And then the second grant, the board is ready for me with our progress, as we are concluding the construction of Phase 1 of Blues Lake Park, which will be open to the public in the upcoming months. We are now preparing to initiate Phase 2. To facilitate this, we are seeking to secure a $500,000 part-of-grant from the state. If awarded, the grant would significantly assist us and would be matched with the 2.5 million already identified by the county as part of the 2023 PEGO projects. The continued development of Blues Lake Park aim to enhance one of our most underserved areas, as identified in the 2015 Parks and Open Space Plan and updated in the 2019 version. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Constantine?
I'll just add, so just a reminder that Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, the source of those dollars are land conveyance fees that are collected by registered deeds when property sold, and so those go into a pool at the state, and then communities from across the state can apply for those dollars. And so there's always been kind of this idea that we contribute into that, those are local dollars coming back to us, and so we keep a part-of-grant application kind of alive all the time, and I think Blues Lake is, you have to add recreational amenities, you've got to have certain amenities to get them, like Three Things, and Blues Lake's a good, a good project, so.
That's good.
But it is sort of local money coming back as it went to the state and back to us.
Good question. What's the, the match requirement for a part-of-grant?
One to one.
One to one?
Yes, sir.
So we're kind of overachieving if we're matching it.
Yes, yes, but according to, to their matching scores, they do pay attention to that matching amount, so the higher the better. 2.5 is what we currently have as far as identified, so.
And a follow-up question, Dudley, do we anticipate currently that there'll be 2.5 million available for the project in PEGO, out of PEGO?
We are still, still working on that. You know, we, we tapped a million and a half last week with the ambulance, that, that funding plan for that.
The application is due May 1st.
Yeah, I am getting, I'm getting a positive reaction and vibes from my finance, my CFO, and so I, you know, I do think we'll. and so, you know, I do think we'll, we'll be there. I do think there's some hard decisions that have to be made based on what that number is, and as we talked about earlier, all that's gonna kind of coalesce with this year's budget, so.
Well, I mean, I'm all for doing it.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we don't.
Yeah.
I was checking to be sure that we don't anticipate we'll be overpromising, because if we, if we say we're gonna match it with 2.5 million, then we don't get the grant of 500K if we don't follow through on that, so.
And it'll be fall, right? I think the, it's usually find out about that in the fall, so we've got some time in the, in the interim, and then if you think about, you got Pago this year, you'll also next year, starting in July, is a two-thirds bond year, and so in budget discussions we're having right now is what the two-third bonds projects look like, so there's a potential funding source there. And then you've really got the 24 Pago, and about the time you know about the grant, you'll know 23 Pago will be done, 24 Pago will be done. And so I feel pretty confident that there are a couple of different revenue sources to match the grant with if we, if we land there.
Well, I'm good, I just wanted to check in.
Other questions for Mike?
Thanks, thanks, Constantine.
Harper, Constantine, excuse me.
And also, we did Parks and Rec budget yesterday, and Constantine's our business manager for all that, and they've done a really good job, and you'll be impressed when we show you the budget for Parks and Rec. They've done a great job with managing the enterprise activities at the parks, and so we'll, we'll be excited for that opportunity, so, thank you. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to North Carolina Foundation for Soil and Water Conservation to apply for and accept if awarded a grant to purchase a no-till planting drill, and I'll let Mike Bowman with Soil and Water review this, and of course, our expert, Commissioner Linville, can tell us about a no-till drill, and if we need to go into any more details.
Thank you. The Soil and Water Board has been leasing out a no-till drill for 14 years, and it's got several thousand acres on it now, and they want to upgrade, and about the same time they made that decision, this grant became available. So I'm here representing the Soil and Water Board, requesting your permission to allow us to proceed with the application for the grant fund.
Good. Would you like to add anything, Commissioner Linville?
Sir?
Would you like to add anything about the, to get it correctly, a no-till planting drill?
No, I'm just gonna use my own, so if I break it, I just have to fix it. I don't want to fix somebody else's stuff.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, we have one contract for consideration. It is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement with Humane Solutions Spay and Neuter Program for surgical space inside the Forsyth County Animal Shelter Building, and Kirsten Briggs, our Animal Control Director, will review this item, and she's got some guests in the audience from Humane Solutions as well, so.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This resolution would be entering us into a lease agreement as well as a service agreement with Humane Solutions Spay and Neuter Program in exchange for providing spay and neuter surgeries to shelter dogs and cats. The one-year agreement would provide access to our surgical space, as well as our former office space that was occupied by the Sheriff's Office, to provide spay and neuter for not only shelter animals, but for community feral cats.
Questions? I'm, in terms of, I guess, numbers, how many, what do you, would expect would be the likely number of animals that could be spayed and neutered, and particularly, we hear about feral cats pretty regularly, so I'm kind of curious about, I mean, can you do hundreds or tens, or how many could you do in a year?
Hundreds of the shelter animals. Where our agreement would be up to 10 dogs or cats per week, which, right now, we're about a month behind in spaying and neutering the, the animals that we've already adopted out, so this would really help with, you know, not having to transport them to the Humane Society of the Piedmont in Greensboro. We could just get them in on, it would be on Sundays. We already have staff there to assist moving the animals back and forth, and they could go out already being spayed and neutered. And on the other day of the week, that surgical space, which is currently not being used, as well as the office space, could be used then for the feral cats, and I could invite Leila up to speak about how that is going to work on their end.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Leila Warren. I'm a founder of Humane Solutions Spay and Neuter Program. So the feral cat program we're talking about is basically for anyone that has a wild cat that lives outside, it will be trapped, neutered, and then returned to its original location. We anticipate having surgeries done mainly on Sundays or Mondays, and we anticipate up to 30 cats per day.
Wow. Wow. Volume of calls provide that? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah. The vets are trained in high-volume spay neuters, so they can do it quickly, and obviously, if there's more male cats, they'll go quicker, but the female cats take just a little bit longer. But, yeah, we can, we can, we plan to be open from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so during that time, they can do that many.
And you actually go and trap the cat in the location?
We have caretakers that will trap and bring them to the shelter.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
You provide the trap?
We do have a trap program, yes. We have about 25 traps in our program.
And so was I, did I hear it correctly, when we met earlier, that it actually leverages volunteer time from vets who are willing to work in our shelter?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yes, we are paying the vets, but some of them are retired, so, and others are just supplementing their hours, so we've got about eight right now that are interested in helping us out.
That's, that's great. That's a great, great partnership.
It's great, it's great to get the, you know, the surgical suite was put in as an alternate service level in a budget a couple of years ago, and to get it back activated is really good, so this will be great.
Any other additional questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Yep. We have one appointment. Has that closed? What's the?
So this appointment was put back on the agenda from a mistake that I made last week, so that's what it's for.
All right, so we'll get that squared away. Item 19, refunds, and as I said when we started the meeting, it's a pretty quick, quick agenda, and so that is all we have for today.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Happy Easter.
Yeah, absolutely.